Another thing you say, which again I think is a good one, is that that in care you should get long-term counselling both while you're in care and after you come out of care.
Definitely.
Because you got bits of counselling, didn't you, but not for very long?
Not last. Yeah, I still needed, needed help. I still needed that counselling.
Yeah. The other thing that you talk about is, is as much as possible keeping your whanau together, your siblings together, because you talk about being broken up and then put back together and then broken up again. So what, what was the impact of that for you?
This is what I hated. I hated that. I've been put together and broken up. It affected me. I wanted to be extended. Like I wanted to be just settled. Looking someone's. I thought that's honestly the reason, honestly the reason. I thought that like. I don't like that. I, I don't know. I just wanted us to be family.
Actually, you say some of the same things. So you also talk about here needed to be in-depth assessments of caregivers. And, and so that there is also to talk about the importance of accountability when things go wrong. Can you just talk about that a bit more?
Yeah, like. Made responsible for, you know, could be the end result. This is, this is this is an impact on what other people's decisions are based on. What we're going to do with the end result. And there should be some accountability. And whether the social workers will be able to live or not.
Another thing that you say, and I mean it's something that we almost, that we started off with really is that you, your thought is that you actually would have been better off with your parents, whether that's with one parent or, or both parents together. Because at least they loved you, rather than them taken away and, and what was essentially strangers. Is that a view you all hold? Or do you have some different views around that? Because one of the things we talked about is just where's whanau and, you know, like where, where were your kara, where are your uncles and aunties, where are they and all of this? And your dad didn't want you to go to his side, but presumably there was mum's side somewhere. So where, where was whanau and all of this? Do you think that, you think that supporting you to stay with mum and dad would have been the best option?
The amount of resources and support they could have given my parents. You know, at the time, we weren't going to work straight away, but I guess at the time, the amount of years we spent in care, it might have taken that long for my parents to come out, but at least they were getting that support and up here along the way.
And Tisa, in, in your statement, you talk about the need for social workers to make consistent and frequent visits to care.
Yeah, I, I believe that should happen. More frequent visits and without the caregivers being present. At the time when they come to see us or anybody. And talk to us away from them as well, so that we are not, so that we can feel comfortable and telling them everything that's going on, if there's things that need to be told.
You also talked about needing, get an explanation about why we were uplifted. When they came and took you, and you talked about being forced into that car, not knowing why.
Yeah, nobody would tell us anything. Like, we're just going on it blind. We don't know what's going on. Like, they just come and talk to us together and let us know what's going on, save us going through all that commotion. Running away and screaming and like, we just don't know what's going on.
That was the case a lot of the time. You often talk about not knowing why things were happening. Do you think it would have helped to have someone talk through whether you what, what was happening and why, and why decisions were being made?
Yeah, I think that it would have made it, made us feel more at ease knowing what's going on and not knowing nothing. That's all we went through basically, is not knowing anything what's going on.
It doesn't sound listening to you like you actually got to even make any decisions yourself.
Not at all.
Yeah. You tell you made decisions by running away. That was your decision making sometimes?
Um, I just feel like it's, as a child, it's your instinct. It's just like if somebody comes along, another stranger, and they're gonna try and grab you and check you in the car, wouldn't you try and do anything to get away from them? I, I think that's normal to want to do that.
And it's a bit obvious that way you'd be able to control what's happening as well.
Yeah.
The last thing I wanted to talk about, and it was the, the last recommendation in your statement, was better incorporating the phiria watawi into care and making sure that experiences are equal between pakeha and nari. But do you, if you were all pakeha, do you think you would have had the same experiences?
Probably not. No, I don't think so. No, definitely not. I reckon there probably would have been treated way differently to before we were pakeha.
You say differently?
To Maori's.
Peter, if you were pakeha, would you be obligated?
I regret, yeah. Sorry to say that, but.
No.
That's how I feel. Yeah.
I'm just, I just, I mean, it's taken a lot of, of bravery and courage to come here today and, and speak. And you know that you know, it's actually been really traumatic for you all. What's your hope? What's your hope by being here? What, what do you, what do you want to say to the commission and, and to the people from Oraa Tamaareke and, and and the New Zealand public who are listening? What's your hope coming out of this? Tisa, do you want to start? Or shall I not come to you guys? Rachel, do you have a, a thought about your hope coming out of this?
I hope for better for, um, and that the younger generations. And I hope for change.
What hope do you have yourself?
I hope to, um, live a full life and not, not, uh, what's that word called? Like just live it to the fullest, not have any barriers.
So one of the things that's important to you, actually, as somebody who's come through this here, is that you get the appropriate support now that you need to live your life to the fullest. Jade, anything you want to add to that? What, what, what would you like to say to those who've listened to you today?
Hope they really listen and they like all of our stories, like that hopefully changes things, like letting them change. About the things, about the system, the generation now or the next generations, and suffer, or you have to, you know, be in those troubles.
Tisa?
What's happened here? So I learned from mistakes. And in situations like this.
Can I ask what I add? Right, you've got here. That's, that's all I think we want to ask you now, but we know that maybe some of the commissioners have some questions for you. So yeah, we can leave you in the hands of the commissioners.
I've been saying this before you, you're over to the commissioners, is that we've talked a lot about the harm today and the things that we need to hear. But you've also been inspirational and you've been courageous and you've held yourselves with dignity today. So I really hope you have pride in yourselves today.
Thank you. The commissioners are going to check.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Miss, Miss Hill and Miss Cooper, and to Namahehui Etewhano, absolutely inspirational, totally to toko. And as tangatafinau, I can say that you absolutely belong. Don't ever believe otherwise. Your ancestors have been with you. I, I think that's where this strength and resilience has come from. But I have asked my other commissioners and they, there are no questions other than Commissioner Eruwete, who is also going to thank you on our behalf. So I'm just going to pass you to Commissioner Eruwete. Kia koe te wa.
Kia ora, tiamana. Kētemi hia tu kia koto me o koto korero maia i takoha mai. My name's Anuru. I'm just gonna ask, I just wanted to ask you about, there's so many questions, but we, um, but I, I, I think in, in, in the evidence that you've given to us, that we've covered a whole lot of things and explained so clearly to me, uh, many of the fundamental problems that we have with the foster care system. But I did want to ask about the, the about your views about reporting, mandatory reporting, where people in positions of responsibility for Tamaareke are compelled to report when they are aware of harm or abuse. Because I, I noticed from your evidence, there was, I think it was might have been you, Peter, or, or one of your sisters who had the stitches and went to see the doctor and, and the doctor didn't report that. And I know that several of you, that it's been clear to your teachers that you've been harmed and yet they didn't report to the authorities about what was happening. So I wondered amongst you collectively about how, what you thought about the need to ensure that well, even those whanau attached to the marae who saw you there working constantly and didn't, and as you said, turned it blind eye to all the mahiwa you were doing. And whether there's a, a need to ensure that when abuse is seen, that it's reported immediately to the authorities.
So what the question is, is do you think that somebody who sees abuse should have to report that abuse?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, um, on behalf of the inquiry, I want to thank you all, Etewhano, for coming and, and giving your evidence to us and for your courage and persistence and dedication. And your evidence, there, there was, the information provided to us today is a whole lot of important themes and messages for the inquiry that we, that we will take with us when we prepare our reports with recommendations to this day. They include, the kopaka just spoke about, about reporting, but also about the need to, to vet caregivers, to evaluate caregivers, to make sure that they're capable of caring for Tamaareke. Uh, that there's proper complaint processes available for Tamaareke, uh, so that you feel safe about talking about your experiences in, in care. That there's proper oversights of, of the care, caregivers, and the mahi that you're doing. And we saw with the home where even though Sis was aware for, I think over a year that you were being beaten, there was nothing done about it and you remained in the care of, of those two caregivers. Uh, the need to ensure that you have, uh, good access to proper counselling and support, both while you're in care, but after care as well. Your views that, that you, you just felt that you were being, were a means of making income for some of the people who were caring for you. The way you were treated, as you put it, as slaves while you worked for, in particular that, that whanau getting up in the middle of the night to do all these chores, to keep that farm going, doing work on the marae. These are all important kopaka that we hear, particularly in our private sessions for those who've been in the foster care system. And also the disconnect that you feel with your, with your with wee-wee and your hapu and your whanau, you know, and, and that's most fundamentally the fact that during the time that you were in care, you were never valued and loved and shown the care and love that you deserved, each and every one of you. Uh, so on behalf of the inquiry, uh, thank you for your time and for sharing with us. And I just want to say it's, it's been very valuable to the inquiry. And it's something we all take to heart and will inspire us as we reflect upon the changes that need to be made to ensure that Tamaareke now in care are safe, and, and those who suffer abuse receive proper robust holistic advice.
Yes, definitely, um, to toko that. Um, we're going to now have a wayata. So we'll just cut over to our beautiful choir. Amahi. Mr Snigler. Arohamai, Mr Snalga, every day I will be getting one name wrong. Today I have to apologize. It has been yours.
No, no, that's fine. I think that's the least of our worries today, Madam Chair. I wonder if we could just take a five-minute adjournment to prepare for our next witness, Glenda Mahi.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
The Maori public hearing has paused for a break. We'll be back in a few minutes. The Maori public hearing has paused for a break. We'll be back in a few minutes. Kahoki mai mato hai ako akene.
Kamaui! Hopae, hiraro. Hopae. Hopae.
Oma ma tua tuku na. Araui aua. Takui ni taku e i taku ana wana. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Oma ma tui ni taku e i taku ana wana. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Uri ti aki a mai. Uri ti aki a mai. Oma ma tua tuku na. Araui aua. Oma ma tua tuku na. Araui aua. Kamaui aua. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Oma ma tui aua. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Uri ti aki a mai. Takui ni taku e i taku ana wana. Takui ni taku e i taku ana wana. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Te tino ra nga tiratanga. Wa warau mai. Wa warau.
The Maori public hearing has paused for a break. We'll be back in a few minutes. Ka Hoki mai mato, hei ako akene.
Kamaui! Hiraro. Hopae. Hiraro. Kamaui! Kotse puro!
Kotse puro! Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. Ika i i. Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. A, a, a i i.
Kotse puro!
Kotse puro! Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. Ika i i. Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. Kaku kaua kaua. A, a, a i i.
The Maori public hearing has paused for a break. We'll be back in a few minutes. Ka Hoki mai mato, hei ako akene.
Kia ora no, Tato. Mr Snigler.
Atena no koe te. Heamanah. Ko Glenda Maihi to Tato kaia fakai tutuuaa motera nei. Kaia tamaki ai te nei wa. Ma council assisting Cesar Mary Downs, Meir Julius Spelman, tiaki ana i Ms Maihi. Our next witness is Ms Maihi, who is joining us from Videolink in Tamaki Makoto. She is assisted by Cesar Mary Downs and Julius Spelman, who are council assisting the Royal Commission. So I'll now hand it over to Ms Mary Downs, who will make an opening statement.
Atena kautau i te hau kainga, ngatipatao orake. Otira kia kautau ngai houtu o te komihana, tena kautau. E revaana aku faaro me aku mahi ki ngamorehu. Ki ngai kaikorero i ngawiki i harima inai. Ngapura pura ora. Kautau i kaui nei i ngatai maha tanga, o te neikapapa. Ngamanaki tanga kirunga i a kautau. Kia manoa roa Tato. My name is Cesar Mary Downs and I am one of the council assists for the Maori Investigation Team. I'm joining from my home in Te Taitekeiro and it is my pleasure to welcome Ms Maihi. Ms Maihi is in Auckland, presenting by AVR with Ms Spelman and Ms Kara. Atena kautau. And tena koe Glenda. I wanted to start by acknowledging you today and the courage that I know it has taken you to be here. I know it is a difficult time for you with the loss of your son and your brother still very cruel for you. Commissioners, as you'll come to hear, Ms Maihi is a woman of great humility. She is tau, she is rangimari despite having lived a very difficult life in state care. At the age of five, Ms Maihi moved with her mother to Christchurch. And between the ages of five and seventeen, Ms Maihi was in three foster care homes, suffering abuse in two of those homes. Feeling unsupported by the state, at the age of seventeen, Ms Maihi applied to leave state care and she was discharged with no support. Prior to Ms Maihi starting her kordoro today, we wanted to draw the commissioners' attention to an important aspect of her kordoro. And that is the impact of the disconnection of fakapapa on Ms Maihi that she suffered while she was in state care. She will explain this in her own words, but I wanted to draw the commissioners' attention to a few statements. Ms Maihi says, "Alone." I guess the overwhelming sense I have of my childhood is of being alone. "No connection. I grew up a lost soul." One of the worst effects of being in state care has been the loss of my identity, my whanau and the loss of my fakapapa. She says, "I wanted to know. There was no work by social welfare to retain my fakapapa." But just as significantly, Ms Maihi also explains, "I'm healing through the re- and reconnecting and learning to love myself through fakapapa." Ms Maihi's evidence brings to life what we know about the importance of fakapapa. Fakapapa is what connects Maori children to their parents, to their tupuna, to their finua and to the Atuwa and spiritual world. Through fakapapa, our Maori children are endowed with all the attributes fundamental to their identity and to their wellbeing. Anyone who contributes to raising Tamariki Maori is responsible for nurturing their fakapapa. But as you all hear, the state care system did not value and did not nurture the fakapapa of Ms Maihi. And her wellbeing in all facets has suffered because of this neglect. Appearing at this hearing is an emotional tryout for Ms Maihi, but she is here and she is ready to tell her story. So I now hand it to Mrs Stinson to take Maihi's, Ms Maihi's affirmation and then to Mrs Maihi and Mrs Spelman to share her story. Tena koe te.
Thank you.
Tena koe. Kia ora.
Tena koe. And tena koe to you, Ms Maihi. I just want to, before we start, just let you know who is in the room here. In our farai today is obviously myself and Commissioner Gibson, hau kainga, our tech team, the Maori Investigation Team, our sign language interpreters. And remotely but at the marai, we also have taraeo interpreters. Online, we also have our other commissioners who are listening and our panel who will be presenting on the last day. We've got our members of Sage and Te Toamata and of course, the rest of the public audience. So I just wanted to let you know that before we moved on. Are you happy to take the affirmation? Ms Maihi. Would you like it in English or in taraeo?
In English. If that's okay in English.
Kapai. Do you solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence you will give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Kapai.
Thank you. Ms Spelman. Kia koe te wa.
Atena koe te heamanah otira ki ngai kaikomihana katoa. Emihi ana kia kautau i ma taki taki maiana, kia Ms Maihi te rani nei.
Tena koe ora, Glenda. I want to begin just by acknowledging who's here in the room on our side to you for being here today and to your kaia kautau toko, who's here with you, as well as the other supporters from the commission who are here in the room, Ms Kara and Ms Waibon Kirshen and our videographer. Before we begin here, I'll just pass over to you so that you can introduce yourself.
I'm Glenda Maihi and I have my girl Kamui here with me.
Kapai. Tena koe roa. Thank you for being here today to support Kamui. This morning, this afternoon, apologies, this afternoon Glenda is going to be reading from her statement, the one that has been prepared for this hearing. And we're just going to move slightly our shot now so that we can be properly socially distanced for the rest of this session. So I'm just going to move slightly out of shot.
And I'll just say, tena koe roa, tena kautau to those in the room with you.
That's a point. So Glenda, over to you just to start us off from the beginning of your statement.
Okay. My name is Glenda Maihi. This is the first time I've shared my story of being in ward of, being a ward of state. This process of telling my story has been really emotional for me and it has brought back a lot of memories. I'm having to work through these again to make sense of my life. I share my experience of being in foster care in the hopes that the system will do better for other children. I don't want other children to have to endure what I did. I guess the overwhelming sense I have of my childhood is the feeling of being alone. During my entire childhood, I didn't know what love was. All I knew was the abuse, the hurt and feeling angry. On top of the abuse, there was no affection, no hugs, no birthdays, no connection. There was never a time I felt that anyone in the state cared for me. I've always felt like an outcast. I remembered wondering when my family was coming to get me. I learnt to look after myself because I never relied on anyone for support. I learnt to solve my own problems because I felt let down on reflection. Social welfare made me feel like a pay packet.
Tena koe, Glenda. We'll just move now to the next session about your whanau and your early life.
I was born on 1972 in Rotorua. I have three brothers and a sister. I'm the second youngest in my family. I have seven children, four of which I gave birth to. And my youngest child is six now. My only memories of abuse in my whanau is from when I was around two or three years old. My mother and I were living with my mother's side of the family. And... Stuck on there.
So I think this part is about someone in the family?
One of the family had some weird ways and I don't think that this person was right mentally. I remember this person putting me in a freezer and my mother trying to stop her. I also remember this person chucking me into the river. There was a lot of abuse. It was a rough time. My mother wasn't abusive, so to be on the receiving end of the abuse was a shock. My siblings back in Rotorua were removed by social welfare and placed in care. And my eldest sister was placed in care first because of the abuse she was receiving. My two older brothers were fostered by family in Rotorua and placed with an uncle. And my younger brother was adopted out as a baby. I lived with my dad briefly until my mother took me away to live in Christchurch. Mum and I moved to Christchurch with her boyfriend. I would have been five years old at the time. I remember starting school in Christchurch and often went to school without lunch. In Christchurch, mum would have brought up parties and random people would come over to our house. We would be at parties with whoever she picked up at the pub. I remembered one night, my mother had gone out and left me home alone. We lived on a busy main road in Christchurch. I was outside by myself in the dark, sitting on the curb of the footpath. I must have fallen asleep waiting for mum. Our neighbour who lived in the front house had taken me into her house and bedded me. The next morning mum came back. A few days later, I was removed from my mum by social welfare and taken into care. I was six years old at the time.
Thank you, Glenda. I want to ask now about the next section, when you were taken into care. And if you could just tell us about the next part in terms of the first foster home that you went to.
Okay. I didn't understand what was happening to me when I was taken into care. I didn't know where I was going or for how long. I was first placed with my whanau in Linwood, first whanau in Linwood. And I was with them for three years. The family had three older children, oh, three older children. My social worker's name was Peter Nichols. When he dropped me off at the first whanau, he told me I had a week to decide if I wanted to stay to live there. He said to me that if I did not like living there, I could go back and live with mum. I remembered asking if I could go to mum and his response was, "No, you can't." "Oh, no, you can. Wait until next week." Well, next week came. Next week never came. I did not, didn't see mum for a long time and I started to feel like no one cared about me. That my mother had forgotten about me. I wondered why I was living with people that I don't know.
Thank you, Glenda. And that's just to clarify, that first whanau that you went to live with, the foster whanau, that they weren't family to you?
No.
That was strangers that you were placed with?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let's just start from this part.
I remember one of the daughters of the whanau saying to me that I was never going back to live with my mum. When I heard her say this to me, I felt scared and confused. My memories of the whanau I had for me because this is where I remember learning about the feeling of fear. It wasn't long before the abuse started and then it became frequent. I would get hidings for trivial things that they thought I had done. I would get hidings for trivial things that they thought I had done. When I was there, I was made to feel like a slave, a punching bag. I learnt that if I tried to stick up for myself, I would get a hiding and a slap around the mouth from the parents. There were also occasions where I would be hit by the foster parents when I had done nothing and there was no reason. For example, I recall a time I was abused. I call this the book incident. We were sitting at the table eating breakfast and I was reading a book. I'd started to read the book aloud to the foster parent. I kept getting one word wrong and it was the word basket, but I kept saying bucket. I was told to put my hand on the table. I was scared and nervous, so I kept repeating the wrong word. My foster parent became angry and frustrated with me and kept hitting me with the knife. He hit my hand with the knife a couple of times until there was a cut in my skin and my hands started to bleed. I would be blamed for anything that went wrong. If one of the other kids in the house accused me of upsetting them, the parents would give me the hiding. The abuse also felt emotional abuse to me. One day, one of the daughters had told me, she was my real sister and that she had been moved into the home before my arrival. This made me feel happy because I thought I had a real sister. However, I realised later that she was lying. She and the other kids would say positive things to me, then turn around and say nasty things and they would constantly put me down. The impact of the mental abuse made me withdrawn and become reclusive. I felt unsafe and learnt not to trust them. During my time with the first whanau, I enjoyed going to school because I didn't have to be at home. At school, I was a different kid. I was more outgoing, loud and boisterous because I was not allowed to be at home. However, I started to bully the other kids at school and I think this is because I was bullied at home. Even at school, I carried fear because my foster parents would frequently threaten me and they'd say things to me like, you wait until you get home. Or it would be wherever we were at the time. I used to wonder what I had done. I felt fear when I knew it was time to go home after school. I was also afraid that someone at school would discover that I was being abused. I learnt to tell lies to cover up the bruises to protect myself. I would pretend. I would pretend everything was fine at the foster home. I knew if the truth came out, I would receive another hiding. I remembered receiving a hiding from the foster parent. He hit me so hard it left a bruise on my leg. It was painful. The next day, at school, we had swimming. And my school friends noticed my bruise and asked what had happened. I was afraid to tell them the truth, so I made up the lie. I covered up the bruise that I fell off a fence at home. This is where I learnt to lie. My social worker, Peter Nichols, would show up after things had happened and it seemed that on that day he had come. Did come. It happened to be a good day and so I would carry on playing. By this time, I had learnt to cover up the lies. The lack of care that social welfare showed me made me realise I could not trust anyone from social welfare. I don't know why the first whanau wanted foster kids. They showed me no love or kindness. I did not feel any joy or happiness with the first whanau. I felt like no one was there for me and I learnt to be a loner. I feel like I lost my childhood. I learnt to grow up fast and become reclusive to protect myself. When I was with the first whanau, my mum went to jail for five years because she wasn't accomplice or was there when someone had been murdered. Before my mum went to jail, mum would pick me up and I would spend the weekends with her. I told her I did not want to go back to the whanau, the first whanau, but the police would return me. I only recall seeing my social worker, Peter Nichols, four or five times. He would pick me up for school and take me to see my mum in the prison. My mother was released from jail when I was 12 years old.
Thank you for sharing that part, Glenda. You'll have to just come on.
I'm good.
So the next section that you were going to tell us about is when you got moved to a second foster family. And the second family, they were also a family that you didn't know.
I didn't know who they were.
Yeah, okay. Well, just when you're ready, if you're going to start again.
I was 10 years old when I was removed by social welfare from the first whanau's house and placed in the second family. And I don't know. The second family had three of their own children. The foster father was Maori and the foster mother was Pakeha. Social welfare did not tell me why I was removed from the first whanau home. I was just told I was going to live with the second whanau. I had no choice or say whether I left or not. I remember thinking maybe the first family had just had enough of me. The few positive memories of living with the second family was when I was able to attend Christian camps. I also stayed with the second whanau extended family and they made me feel more welcome than my second whanau. However, the second whanau home was worse than the first time. When I arrived at the second home, I was still feeling fearful because of my experiences with the first whanau. And I was quite withdrawn. I had only been there for a short time before the parents and children started physically and mentally abusing me. I recall having to tie up one of the kid's shoelaces and it kicked me in the teeth. It was painful. On another occasion, I recall one night talking to one of the kids in bed and the foster father was angry. He slapped me hard across my face only because I was talking in bed. And being a young kid, you go in a chat. He was a big man and I was a little kid, so it felt daunting. The next day, I went to school with a black eye and the other kids said, school had asked what had happened. I replied, I was just playing and so and so hit me in the eye. I was constantly lying to cover up the bruises I received at home. The foster parent would hit me, the foster father would hit me and the foster mother would yell at me. Another incident I recall is the foster father threatening me with a half shovel. He was trying to get me to own up to something I didn't do. I also recall being hit with a jug cord. I was treated differently from the other kids. I don't recall the foster father hitting his own kids. I was just, it was just me receiving the hidings. I was treated like the odd one out and constantly reminded I was the foster kid. They did not treat their own kids in this way. I felt like the housemaid cleaning up after everyone. One of my jobs that they made me do was to fetch the coal in winter. I was a small child and a heavy coal, and heaving coal was heavy. I remember another time the foster parents blamed me for something I hadn't done and they kept me in the room for two days and withheld food as a form of punishment until I said sorry for what I had done. I would go to the toilet because that was the only time I was allowed out and have a drink of water just to have something in my stomach. Finally, I gave in and said that I had done what they accused me of. I was starving and wanted to play with the other kids. I did not receive any of the love and compassion during my time with the second whanau. I don't remember ever being caddled. They never encouraged me to do anything. I was just their punching bag and slave. The abuse felt constant and I felt like I was pipped on all the time by them. Looking back, I couldn't believe that the second whanau could treat kids like that. The impact of their abuse made me feel worthless and insecure. The foster homes I was placed with made me feel like they only wanted me around because of the money they received through social welfare. I remembered the day when I decided that I had had enough of their mental abuse. We were outside in the sleepout, eating our dinner and there was a dartboard. The three children told me to stand up near the dartboard and started using my feet as the dartboard. One of the darts stabbed into my foot. They all freaked out and started, and I started crying. As I watched them run out of the room, I was yelling at them, saying I hated them and that I didn't want to be there anymore. I stayed in the sleepout and thought, fuck, I'm going to get a hiding. I better just sit here for a bit. Then I walked back to the house and the foster father told me to sit at the table. I had told them I didn't want to be there and that I could not take it anymore. Not long after that incident, I was moved by social welfare to another foster home.
Thank you, Glenda. I know it's taking a lot for you to share this.
I'm good.
Well, the next section of your statement talks about the third foster home that you got placed in when you were about 12. So if I could just ask you now to tell us about going to that third foster home.
I was 12 when I was placed by social welfare into my third foster home. My third foster home.
For this, but I know we've got the name of your foster mother, which you're not going to say.
Can I just say, my third foster mother's name was mum. Became mum, so.
And that's right, we spoke earlier about how she wasn't your birth mum, but you called her mum. Yeah, okay. So for this part, you're going to refer to mum.
Okay. I lived in this home until I was 17 years old. I ended up calling mum, mum, because I trusted her so much. I was happy living with mum and she wanted to adopt me. I felt like the first family, it felt like the first family I had ever had. My foster father was a sergeant in the army. We moved around when they separated and it was a bit unsettling. I felt like I was a gypsy. There were two older foster kids living there as well and my relationship with them was good. It was a much better experience living with mum. I had learnt love and she taught me how to look after myself, even though I had shut down because of my previous experiences. I learnt to be open, to share and finally to trust someone. Mum also taught me to find my voice again. The voice I had when I was a child, back when I lived with my mother.
So you stayed with mum for five years? And the next part of your statement, you'd tell us about the process of separating from the state when you were a state ward. So just when you're ready, if you want to tell us about that part.
Okay. I was 16 years old when I separated from the state. I didn't like the way the state was treating me, treating me even in my late teens. One day, I just said to mum, I'm sick of being treated like a book. A book that they can pick up and drop wherever and whenever they like. Mum supported me and encouraged me to break away from the state. She came with me to the interview where I told the case manager that I didn't like how I had been treated by social welfare and I asked to separate from the state. I didn't want to be under their control. I was also scared that they would remove me from mum's house. I wanted to stay there. Once they discharged me, there was no support from the state. I stayed with my mum for another year. I left the system, but I still held feelings of mistrust for the system even into my adult life.
Tenakua, Glenda. The next section is moving on a bit to the part where you met your husband and other things that happened after you left state care. Are you all right to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
When I was 18, I moved with my mother. That's my birth mother. And not long after that, I met my husband.
Say husband.
With my husband, I felt like I learnt to know what love was and I had found someone who loved me. My husband had three children who I connected with straight away. Our first son was born a year later, followed by our two younger ones, because my baby. So we had six children altogether. Richard helped me heal and become stronger. He also helped me build a stronger relationship with my mum. My husband and I were together for 12 years until he got sick and passed from diabetes. I was 30 years old when he died. I felt alone again, like I had no one. I realised there was just me and my kids and that I needed to keep going. Losing my husband triggered my past and I started to drink and do dumb stuff. My grief for him really brought back the pain of my childhood. And I can see now I was still hurt from my past and it kept coming back to hit me in the face again. I experienced a lot of grief and there were some dark moments. There were times when I would think I wanted to end things. I thought my kids would be fine. So now, six years ago, my youngest daughter was born. She's like a gift. As a mother, I felt like I needed to keep my kids safe. I raised them with a voice. I see in my daughter the same outspoken attitude that was in me before I went into state care. And it was all ripped away from me before I had to start locking myself up and being careful of what I would say and do. I grew up feeling like a lost soul. One of the worst effects of being in state care has been the loss of my identity. The loss of my family. And the loss of my fa'aka papa. As I mentioned, my siblings were all placed in Rotorua with extended family. I was in Christchurch with mum and placed with strangers. I barely saw my siblings while I was a ward of the state. And after some time, I could not remember their faces. I remember seeing them perhaps once or twice. I remember visiting my sister once at her foster home where I read. A letter she had wrote to my mum about how she did not really want to meet me. I thought my sister resented me because she thought that mum and I were living together in Christchurch. And she was jealous. She did not realise that I was in foster care while I was there. I also had feelings towards them too because they grew up around whanau and I didn't get that. When you are young and people don't explain what's happening, you are trying to figure out your world. Now we have had a chance to talk and we get on really well. I met my brother around the same time. They brought him in for the date and then he left. When I met him, I could see how similar we were. My siblings also suffered while being in state care. My brothers live, who lived with my uncle were associated with gangs and eventually ended up going to jail. Due to our separation from each other, our whanau's relationships as adults, as adults have been fractured. The effects of having no connection with my siblings made me feel alone. Growing up feeling like I had no one was very hard. I wondered why social welfare did not ask my father if they wanted to take me into care. Someone would have wanted me. My mum's brother told me he had come to Christchurch to look for me, but social welfare couldn't find him. There was no work by social welfare to retain my fa'aka papa or my cultural identity. I wanted to learn about my cultural identity, but I did not know where to go to. When I reconnected with mum, I learnt about Ma'ri dun. I've been trying to heal and reconnect my fa'aka papa and want to learn more about who I am. I practice Wa'dua Miri in my community. I can empathise with people who are hurting because of my own experiences. I can feel their memory, so I use Miri Miri to help me, help with healing. In my healing, I have learnt to love myself probably more than, more than ever before in all my life. I had to let the pain go.
You're right, Glenda.
Oh, sorry.
I know in this next part, you want to talk about your recommendations for change and what things should be done differently. Could you tell us about those for Kāraro?
I know the state needs to carry out proper checks and screens on the foster families where our kids go. And the case managers need to build relationships with our children in care so they have someone to talk to. If something is going on in their placement. There needs to be regular check-ins with the kids, making sure they are safe in the home. And social workers need to be consulting their child and explaining why they need to move. And into another placement and seeking their view and inputs. There needs to be training and proper support for case managers and caregivers. Most importantly, the state needs to involve whanau and ask them whether they want to take in a child and support them to take. Children prior to looking beyond the whanau for their options, for their options. If children are taken away from their whanau, they will lose who they are. That creates more issues for the child and whanau.
I know that you also. Wanted to speak a little bit about, given the disconnection you had from your whanau, how you've gone on in your life to find others who have become your whanau. Tell us about that.
Um, yeah, well, with me not having whanau, I ended up. Meeting some pretty amazing people along my journey. That um, my children nearly went through the same process that I went through. Cause I was going through the grieving of my husband and my mum. And I was just so lucky in the community that I was in, that I had some amazing family members. I guess other people would call them their best friends, but for me, they were the only example of family that I had ever had. That I had been given. And like I only met the sister, but I ended up meeting the rest of the family and. They've all taken me on as, and my children on as their, their family. So I just wanted to share that, like my children nearly went through the same thing, thing. But because of whanau, that weren't even blood, they were there, they helped me, they helped me with my children. So I ended up just finding my own family out there. That were supportive and have always been there, so with every loss I've had, they've been there.
Was there anything else, Glenda, that you wanted to add to your quarter today or any other thoughts you wanted to share with the commissioner?
Can I hit so? I hit hits.
Well, one thing we might do that we just spoke about is just to pass back to Susan Mary. Um, to see if she had anything that she wanted to add at this point.
I, I don't have any questions, um. Glenda, other than to me, to you and acknowledge the emotion and sincerity behind your quarter. Um, I can tell that it took a lot of courage and you told it beautifully, so I thank you. And I hope that it has helped to contribute a part of your healing, which I know is ongoing. Um, and perhaps the commissioners may have questions.
Kia ora Susan. So Glenda, this will be the point where the commissioners might have some questions for you, if it's something that we would like to have some questions from them. It's a heal mana commissioner Stetson, if I could pass back to you. Ms. Mahi has indicated she would be happy to have perhaps just a couple of questions from commissioners.
Oh, eme hi ana kia koe Ms. Mahi, um. Yeah, thank you so much for your, sharing your experiences in Kāraro today, very, very emotional and. How beautiful that you're a healer, how beautiful. Um, we don't have any partai for you today, um, but I am going to pass it over to my, um. Fellow Commissioner Alafivai, just to thank you on behalf of the commission.
Te naku e Glenda, tālāpāla. Always beautiful to see you again and. First off, can I just start by acknowledging the loss of your son and your brother, which I understand is still very raw. Thank you for, thank you for thinking about others beyond yourself and still bringing yourself to come. Uh, this day to be able to share your. The stuff that happens to you, very intimate things that were raw and ugly. But the courage and the strength and the beauty in which you told it today, actually to the whole nation. Is really something that we wanna just absolutely applaud and uh, so grateful for. Glenda, I wanna also thank your girl, Kimi Wai, who's there. Thank you, Kimi Wai, I know you can hear me. Thank you for standing tall and strong and in the gap beside your mama, uh, to, for her to be able to do this today. Thank you also, Glenda, for sharing, um, the beauty around, um, Richard. And what that really did to you in terms of breaking you. And the fact that with him, you found, um, just an amazing unconditional love. Which I think might have been nurtured, uh, first off in the third foster home, uh, with the woman that you came to love and your mum. So there is, there is so much power in your story. You know, Glenda, we often say N doesn't equal one. So the fact that that mum of yours actually helped you find your voice. And you've been brave enough to come today to be able to share it on a public platform. You're speaking, Glenda, for so many others, for lots of reasons who, who aren't able to come forward. But who we know whose stories would be very similar to your own. So can I thank you, um, on behalf of the commission. Uh, for sharing it in the context here of our Ma'ri hearing, it's so powerful, it's so important that we. We hear these stories and these voices of the things that honestly happen. And how it is that we can, um, stand together and make some solid recommendations about what is it that honestly needs to change. So things like this don't happen again. Glenda, I hope you will take the time now to look after yourself. I know you're a healer, but you know, even healers need nurturing.
It's all been a lot.
Or, yeah, so, um, we, we wanna look after you too. So I hope you'll, um, accept the support, um, the extensive support that the Kumihana wants to be able to offer you. And that you'll continue to walk beside us, um, as we see our, our, our mission through. Uh, first off in this hearing, but also in terms of, of our commission work. Pakete la pā Glenda, ma'li.
Thank you.
Tenaku e Commissioner Alafivai, um, and.
Thank you.
Namahi, namahi.
Glenda, um. At this point, it feels appropriate to pass the rako to Kimi Wai, who's just been mentioned. So etikana i kua, kitu kua tūtiraku kiakui, um, tūkaita tōku i te rani nei. Um, for the way at a total call for Ms. Mahi. Can we stand up or we're just.
Oh, atahu a rāwe, name hinei kiakato.
Thank you, mother.
Absolutely beautiful. Okay. Kia koe, Ms. Snelga.
Uh, that brings us to an end of today's evidence, Madam Chair. Uh, my understanding that we will be closing, um, today's session with a karakia.
Aye, aye. Thank you, Mr. Snelga. Um, so we'll be resumed tomorrow morning at nine thirty AM. Now, Mahi, can I please ask Matua Willis to close our proceedings today with a karakia and, uh, we'll, we'll wait her with you.